Imena Trente Sais, Nala Hesletu and Guahan is back in session. Good afternoon, colleagues. We are now on the third reading, on the consideration of the daily file, beginning with the third reading file. So we will begin with Bill number 243-36 LS. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 243-36 LS, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture, and further amended on the floor, introduced by Mary Camacho Torres, Therese M. Turlohi, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Amanda L. Shelton, James C. Moylan, Jose Pito Turlohi, V. Anthony Ada, Frank Blas Jr., Clinton Eva Gell, Joe S. Sinagustin, Christopher M. Duñez, Sabina Flores Perez, Tilina Cruz Nelson. An act to amend sections 25.10A, 25.15A, 4-7, 25.20A, 4-7, 25.2583, and 25.30A2 of Chapter 25, Title IX, Guam Code Annotated, relative to defining consent, revising the language of mental defective to mentally impaired, and expanding the definition of mental incapacitation and physically helpless.
Thank you. Roll call. Senator Ada.
Senator Ada, I. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, I. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, I. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, I. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, I. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, I. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, I. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, I.
Majority Leader, you are recognized.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse members not present for today's voting.
On the motion to excuse members not present for today's voting, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Senator Rogel excused. Senator Sinagustin. Senator Sinagustin, I. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton excused. Senator Tidagui. Senator Tidagui, I. Senator Turlohi. Senator Turlohi excused. Speaker Turlohi. Speaker Turlohi, I. Senator Torres.
Bill number 243-36 LS received 11 ayes and four excused. Bill number 243-36 LS is duly passed by the body. We're now on bill number 244-36 LS. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 244-36 LS, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture, and further amended on the floor, introduced by Mary Camacho Torres, Therese M. Turlohi, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Amanda L. Shelton, James C. Moylan, Jose Pito Turlohi, V. Anthony Ada, Frank Blas Jr., Clinton Eva Gell, Joe S. Sinagustin, Christopher M. Duñez, Sabina Flores Perez, Tilina Cruz Nelson. An act to add a new chapter 163 to Title VIII, Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing a bill of rights for victims of sexual assault, and to cite this act as the Survivors' Bill of Rights Act of 2022.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, I. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, I. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, I. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, I. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, I. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, I. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, I. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, I. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel excused. Senator Sinagustin. Senator Sinagustin, I. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton excused. Senator Tidagui. Senator Tidagui, I. Senator Turlohi. Senator Turlohi excused. Speaker Turlohi. Speaker Turlohi, I. Senator Torres. Senator Torres excused.
Bill number 244-36 LS received 11 ayes and four excused. Bill number 244-36 LS is duly passed by the body. We're now on bill number 300-36 LS. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 300-36 LS, as amended by the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement and Statistics, Research and Planning, and further amended on the floor, introduced by Sabina Flores Perez, Therese M. Turlohi, Taloti Tidagui, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Joanne Brown, Frank Blas Jr., V. Anthony Ada, Christopher M. Duñez, James C. Moylan, Tilina Cruz Nelson, Clinton Eva Gell, Joe S. Sinagustin, Amanda L. Shelton, Jose Pito Turlohi, Mary Camacho Torres. An act to repeal and reenact section 5213 of Subarticle B, Article III, Chapter 5, Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to strengthening the requirements of small purchases.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, I. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, I. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, I. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, I. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, I. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, I. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, I. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, I. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel excused. Senator Sinagustin. Senator Sinagustin, I. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton excused. Senator Tidagui. Senator Tidagui, I. Senator Turlohi. Senator Turlohi excused. Speaker Turlohi. Speaker Turlohi, I. Senator Torres. Senator Torres excused.
Bill number 300-36 LS received 11 ayes and four excused. Bill number 300-36 LS is duly passed by the body. We're now on resolution number 290-36 COR. Clerks, please read the title.
Resolution number 290-36 COR, as amended on the floor, introduced by V. Anthony Ada, Frank Blas Jr., Christopher M. Duñez, Joe S. Sinagustin, Jose Pito Turlohi, Therese M. Turlohi, Taloti Tidagui, Amanda L. Shelton, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, James C. Moylan, Sabina Flores Perez, Joanne Brown, Clinton Eva Gell, Mary Camacho Torres, Tilina Cruz Nelson. Relative to expressing the support of Imena Trente Sais, Nala Hesletu and Guahan for the passage of HR 3512, the Health Care for Our Troops Act, which would provide access to zero-cost TRICARE, Reserve Select, and Dental Coverage Healthcare to Reserve Component Service members.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, I. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, I. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, I. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, I. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, I. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, I. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, I. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, I. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel excused. Senator Sinagustin. Senator Sinagustin, I. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton excused. Senator Tidagui. Senator Tidagui, I. Senator Turlohi. Senator Turlohi excuse. Speaker Turlohi. Speaker Turlohi, I. Senator Torres. Senator Torres excused.
Resolution number 290-36 COR received 11 ayes and four excused. Resolution number 290-36 COR is adopted by the body. Resolution number 315-36 LS. Clerks, please read the title.
Resolution number 315-36 LS, as amended by the author and further amended on the floor, introduced by Tilina Cruz Nelson, V. Anthony Ada, Frank Blas Jr., Joanne Brown, Christopher M. Duñez, James C. Moylan, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Sabina Flores Perez, Clinton Eva Gell, Joe S. Sinagustin, Amanda L. Shelton, Taloti Tidagui, Jose Pito Turlohi, Therese M. Turlohi, Mary Camacho Torres. Relative to expressing the utmost support of Imena Trente Sais, Nala Hesletu and Guahan, the 36 Guam Legislature, for the passage of HR 6675, the Independent VA Audit Act, which directs the U.S. Secretary of Veterans Affairs to enter an agreement with a non-governmental entity to conduct an audit of the healthcare system of the Department of Veterans Affairs.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, I. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, I. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, I. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, I. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, I. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, I. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, I. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, I. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel excuse. Senator Sinagustin. Senator Sinagustin, I. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton excuse. Senator Tidagui. Senator Tidagui, I. Senator Turlohi. Senator Turlohi excuse. Speaker Turlohi. Speaker Turlohi, I. Senator Torres. Senator Torres excuse.
Resolution number 315-36 LS received 11 ayes and four excuse. Resolution number 315-36 LS is duly adopted by the body. We're now on bill number 242-36 LS. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 242-36 LS, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture, and further amended on the floor, introduced by Mary Camacho Torres, Therese M. Turlohi, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Amanda L. Shelton, James C. Moylan, Jose Pito Turlohi, V. Anthony Ada, Frank Blas Jr., Clinton Eva Gell, Joe S. Sinagustin, Christopher M. Duñez, Tilina Cruz Nelson. An act to add a new Article II to Chapter 40 of Title VII, Guam Code Annotated, and a new Section 30.400 to Chapter 30 of Title IX, Guam Code Annotated, relative to transferring or releasing victims of family violence, sexual assault, and stalking from shared wireless
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, I. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, I. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, I. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, I. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, I. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, I. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, I. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, I. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel excuse. Senator Sinagustin. Senator Sinagustin, I. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton excuse. Senator Tidagui. Senator Tidagui, I. Senator Turlohi. Senator Turlohi excuse. Speaker Turlohi. Speaker Turlohi, I. Senator Torres.
Bill number 242-36 LS received 11 ayes and four excuse. Bill number 242-36 LS is duly passed by the body. We're now on bill number 301-36 LS. Clerks, please read the title.
Bill number 301-36 LS, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture, and further amended on the floor, introduced by Joe S. Sinagustin. An act to approve the second amended and restated land lease agreement between the Guam Power Authority and Guam Ukuru Power LLC, LLC, as lenders conditioned to fund the construction of a 198 MW power plant and battery energy storage system facility located on lot numbers 5010-1NEW-NEW-1 and 5010-1NEW-NEW-R1, Daredo and Related Reserve Facility located on lot number 261-2PD Guam, and to authorize the use of those properties for such purposes.
Roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, I. Senator Blas. Senator Blas pass. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, I. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, I. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, I. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, I. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, I. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, I. Senator Rogel. Senator Rogel excuse. Senator Sinagustin. Senator Sinagustin, I. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton excuse. Senator Tidagui. Senator Tidagui, I. Senator Turlohi. Senator Turlohi excuse. Speaker Turlohi. Speaker Turlohi, I. Senator Torres. Senator Blas.
Bill number 301-36 LS received 11 ayes and four excuse. Bill number 301-36 LS is duly passed by the body. We're now in the voting file, beginning with the nomination of Lola E. Leon Guerrero to serve as Director of the Bureau of Statistics and Plans. On the nomination of Lola E. Leon Guerrero to serve as the Director of the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, roll call.
Senator Ada. Senator Ada, I. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, I. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, I. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, I. Senator Moylan. Senator Moylan, I. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Irajele. Senator Irajele, excuse. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, aye. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, excuse. Senator Tidagui. Senator Tidagui, aye. Senator Turlahi. Senator Turlahi, excuse. Speaker Turlahi. Speaker Turlahi, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, excused.
Lola E. Leon Guerrero received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Conchita S. N. Titano to serve as a member of the Port Authority of Guam Board of Directors, all in favor, please raise your hand. Conchita S. N. Titano received majority support and is duly confirmed by the body. Majority Leader Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make, notwithstanding House rules, I'd like to make a motion to go back to motions. All right. The motion to go back to motions is because we have a state funeral tomorrow. And so we are going to make a motion to recognize the state funeral. I will withdraw my motion so we can move into extension of remarks.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader. So we've exhausted the consideration of the daily file. We are on brief extension of remarks. Is there anyone who would like to be recognized under brief extension of remarks? If not, then Majority Leader, you are recognized.
Sido Masim, Madam Speaker. Notwithstanding House rules, I move to go back to motions.
On the motion, notwithstanding the House rules, to go back to motions, are there any objections? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Majority Leader Nelson, you are recognized.
Sido Masim, Madam Speaker. I move to resolve into the Committee of the Hall for the purpose of conducting the state funeral service for the late Honorable Ignacio Ninetti Sablon, former Commissioner of Sinahania, and that it be conducted in its formal manner and that we recess to prepare for the same. And that we recess until 10:00 a.m. tomorrow.
On that motion, the motion was made to resolve into the Committee of the Hall for the purpose of conducting the state funeral for the late Honorable Ignacio Ninetti Sablon, former Commissioner of Sinahania, and that it be conducted in its formal manner and that we recess to prepare for the same until 10:00 a.m. tomorrow. Are there any objections? Please raise your hand. If there are no objections, motion carries and we are recessed until 10:00 a.m. tomorrow. The ceremony will begin promptly at 10:00 a.m., senators. Thank you.